Pursuant to Policy 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given March 29th, 2024. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering in the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Sorry, y'all can keep talking. That was just a five-minute warning. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, April 15th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes. The public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Presentation of the Colors and the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Burke High School, JROTC.
Terry, colors. Forward, march. Color card, pull. Post. The colors. Present, arms.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
Please be seated. Thank you. Vice President Smith, if you could lead us in the vision and mission, please.
The vision: Every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Full.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Crackkey.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Tealyn.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger. Nine present.
Thank you. Let's see, next we have School Spotlight with Kayla Morrissey.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Mr. Ray. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight features state wrestling champions from throughout Omaha Public Schools. We are proud to welcome Abdi Unli from Bryan High, Kevin Boston from Central High, Tyson Terry from North High, and our first-ever girls wrestling champion Anne Marie Maiman from North High. I'd like to invite them all to the podium to share a few remarks.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor to be recognized for my recent accomplishment at the NSA State Tournament. I would like to thank Omaha Public Schools, Bryan High, and the wrestling program for allowing me to pursue my passion in wrestling. I would also like to thank Coach Hushnar and the rest of the coaching staff for the constant support that led me to the success. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin Boston from Omaha Central High. I just want you guys to know how grateful I am to receive this award and, you know, to be honored and recognized. I just want to say how grateful I am for my coaching staff, my parents, family, parents, everybody that's pushed me here to get this far and achieved this goal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tyson Terry from North High. I just want to say I've been OPS kid my whole life. I'm thankful to be recognized here today. Same thing, I just want to thank my family, my coaches, everybody who's helped me get put in this situation.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Maiman from Omaha North High. It's a great honor to be able to become the first female state champ from OPS, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to compete with North. And I'm really grateful for my coaches, Steven, Robert, and Jackie for sure, and Carlson for pushing me to start my first year, and for my family and friends as well.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for being here. Congratulations on your state titles and your accomplishments. We'll open it up to questions, colleagues. Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Head. As the grandmother of twins six-year-olds, I have to ask when each of you started wrestling, please.
Abdi, I started in seventh grade.
I'm sorry, what?
I started in seventh grade.
Seventh grade, okay.
From what my dad told me, I started when I was three years old, but, you know, I don't really remember the practice, you know? You just wake up one day, he's there, so.
So we're behind the curve.
Four to five years old I was when I started.
Tyson, I just wanted to point out that I do recognize you. This is your third year in a row for being heavyweight champion from the state of Nebraska. And if people don't read the World Herald, Tyson is on his way to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln to play football after one more year of high school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I started my sophomore year when they first sanctioned it.
Was that the first year that wrestling was available for girls?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for taking on that interesting challenge and for repping OPS so well. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Full?
Yes, thank you. My question is for Anne Marie. Sorry to make you come back up again. I just wanted to know, you know, did you grow up with a lot of brothers? Did you wrestle a lot growing up? Did you take classes? Or kind of, how did you get to this level so quickly to be able to, you know, win a championship at state?
Well, I'm an only child and no wrestler is really in the family. I played volleyball for a while. I played at North all years. I just decided to try something new.
That's awesome. Yeah. Good job for putting yourself out there and look where it got you. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Seeing none. Congratulations again. Thank you for all your hard work as OPS students, making us proud as wrestlers. If you could come by, give everybody a handshake, and we've got some gifts for you as well. Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda, we have Board and Superintendent Communications Treasurers Report. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. The monthly financials for February 28, 2024 are presented for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to board member comments. Do we have any board comments tonight, colleagues? Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you. I wanted to draw attention to the fact that one of the items on our consent agenda, item I-15, I think, yes, is for us to buy an anatomage table, which has a recent bones convert. I can't help but think how cool this table is. To describe it, it's used for curriculum and instructional delivery at the university level, digital models and human anatomy recreations. The simulated body and components go beyond dissection with the table and provide various hands-on experiences utilizing life-size digital cadavers to deepen the level of learning for whole-body systems. Not that this is something I would want to do, but I just think it's fascinating that such a thing exists. And I also want to point out, this is the third one of these we have purchased. The first one went to North High, the second one went to Westview, and this one is going to go up to Northwest. So that's super exciting. I also just want to take a second to acknowledge the parents of one of my elementary schools. Many of them are here tonight, and some of them are planning on speaking. I had a lot of communications with them over the weekend, and I just, notwithstanding the fact that there was something happening, which you will hear about, that they are not happy about, I am happy that we have such engaged parents. I mean, we can't have a public school system without parents that are as engaged as these folks are. So thank you for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Thank you, President Head. So I just had a few comments that I wanted to make. First of all, I listened to an OPS podcast for the first time, Mr. Ray, and I was really impressed with the students that he interviewed. I remember one of them was a wrestler, and the students were so calm, you know, and poised, and I was just so impressed with the results of the podcast and very, very proud of the students for their interactions. And I also wanted to mention that I went to the Easter egg hunt that was in South Omaha at Spring Lake this weekend. And of course, when I chose to interact with the family, it was an OPS family from Gateway, and I heard rave reviews from the family about the school. And of course, love to point that out. It's always nice for a school board member to hear positive feedback from a family. And also, one of the policemen that was there was an OPS graduate. So it was nice just to be in a great environment like that. And of course, the kids had a great time, but I just wanted to give a few shout-outs tonight about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Full?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a quick acknowledgement to the parents and the students who have been emailing me over the past couple weeks about the discontinuation of the middle college program. I know that was a real disappointment to a lot of families and students, but I have elevated your concerns through the proper channels. We are getting, you know, updates about outreach efforts with the students and the families and new placement of students where they're going to go and everything like that. And I think with the exception of a couple, we already know where all of them are going to be placed. I think it's really important to be an advocate for better alternative programs in OPS and non-traditional ways of learning because not everybody thrives in a typical learning environment. So it's really important that we, you know, keep good programs going, but when it's time to discontinue something, you know, to be honest, I don't know what all goes into it. But I just hope that the students who are placed in, you know, new programs thrive. And if parents or students ever have concerns about their new placement or anything else to do with, you know, non-traditional ways of learning and alternative programs, I'd love to hear about them. So that's all.
Thank you. Any other board comment, colleagues? All right. Seeing none. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. We have 12 speakers who have submitted requests to be heard forms tonight, and the board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent you're able, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear as many of you as possible. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you do not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those specifics for you. If you do not get the opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, Nebraska Revised Statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the board identify yourself, including an address, and the name of any organization you may represent, unless this requirement is waived for security reasons. And we have one individual who has requested a waiver. Do we have a motion to approve that waiver request? All right. We do not have a motion. So as a reminder, please state and spell your first and last name, give your address, and any organization you may represent. Again, that's in accordance with Nebraska Revised Statute 841412. The statute does, however, exempt current students, so if you're a current student, you don't need to give your address. Again, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium. Do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know, and she will come get them from you. It is now 6:18 PM, and our first speaker is Jalen Bensinger.
Do I hold this or just push it? Do I hold it down? Okay, you can hear me. Okay. Hi, my name is Jalen Bensinger. I am not a current student of the OPS. I'm here to represent the UNO OPS Middle College Program, however. My address is 2881 Whitmore Street of Omaha. So happy April Fool's Day, you guys. Wouldn't it be great if this was just all a big joke? Unfortunately, it's not. I'm here. So I'm here to speak about the detriment you'll be causing by closing the UNO OPS Middle College Program. I graduated last year from the program after transferring from Central High School my sophomore year. I must make it clear that I come from almost nothing. No one in my family before me has a degree, and we live in North Omaha, where only 14% of our population there has completed a bachelor's degree, according to the University of Nebraska at Omaha. Transferring to this program was a lifeline for me. My transcript shows me failing almost every class up until the transfer, and it is quite a dichotomy sitting next to my list of all As from the program. Now, we have pleaded for a listening ear, but obviously, that isn't what you want. You don't want to hear that I'm the first ever in my family to attend college. You don't want to hear that I got $168,000 in scholarships over the next three years. You don't want to hear that I hold a 3.9 GPA in college. And you surely don't want to hear that I'm a presidential member of the National Society for Leadership and Success, along with being a research assistant for a seven-time-authored social psychologist, because that would prove how successful this program is. So what do you want to hear? That after 20 strong years, you let the interim superintendent close one of the most prosperous alternative programs in Nebraska, despite not being in our classrooms longer than an hour? Not after speaking to our students, after not hearing of our successes? Do you want to hear that we don't care whether it was UNO's decision or OPS's? Your decision to not sunset the program is one of cowardness and cruelty to every single current student in this program? Aren't you supposed to fight for us, fight for them? Or have you gotten too great a taste of your pension yet? Since this space is obviously such a priority to you, just having it renovated, why don't we hold the program here? Why don't you give us options so they can graduate together? Why don't you sunset this program? Why don't you do this right? I guess it is April Fool's Day, though, right? Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker is Stanley Kline. And as a reminder, since you're a current student, you won't need to give your address.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Stanley Kline. I am a current senior at the UNO Middle College. Now, I'm here to tell you about my current experiences with the program and how it has benefited me as a student. Growing up, my dad always told me not to fight for what I believe in if it doesn't impact me directly. Now, I know that this is a matter that does not impact me directly, because I'm a senior, I'm about to graduate, but it does impact my friends. And when I say my friends, I do not mean the students in the program. I mean the teachers as well, as well as the head supervisor of the program. I mean everybody that I have met during my year and a half at this program. At Northwest, I was a very demotivated student. I was doing my work, I was ahead in my classes, but I never played attention in any of them. On the normal day, you would find me playing Sudoku or Minesweeper. I would be doing things not educational, because I felt that everything that I could learn from school was something that I didn't need to learn. So when I was presented with the option to go to the UNO Middle College, it was presented to me as an opportunity for some higher learning, for a different classroom environment, for something, a change of pace from normal, traditional high school. So for me, I came to the program, and that's what I expected, but I got that and more. I got so many great new friends from all of it. I met so many great people, and I've met some great professors at UNO. Just everything that I have gotten from this program has been a great experience for me and very valuable, and it has motivated me to want to go to college again and become a math teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eva Casas. Eva, sorry.
So my name's Eva Casas. I don't need to give my address, right? Good evening. I'm a sophomore at the OPS Middle College Program. Like the vast majority of my fellow middle college students, my path through education has been less than straightforward. I moved from OPS to Millard for middle school with the hopes of going to Millard North High, but upon the opening of Westview, I decided to switch back for my freshman year. It was, to summarize, the worst school year of my life. Everyone was a stranger given my absence in middle school, and the thought of trying to penetrate into the existing friend groups in a and the thought of trying to penetrate into the existing friend groups in a setting so large was incredibly daunting. There were some days I could count the number of times I opened my mouth on one hand, and I felt a total disconnect from the world around me. I worked much faster than my peers, which resulted in an all-consuming boredom that was truly destructive to me. I lost a passion not only for school, but for life as a whole. Coming to the Middle College Program has reignited my passion for learning several times over. I've met some of the most wonderful, intelligent, and funny people here, along with some of my favorite teachers ever. It's difficult to put into words how much the people in this program genuinely care for each other. And through them, I found a version of myself that I could never have imagined at Westview. I hope we can understand then that the abrupt announcement of Middle College's elimination came as a world-shattering surprise. In processing this drastic change, we've been left with some questions. We understand that the Middle College in its current form can't exist without UNO's agreement, a piece that we're missing. But what I struggle to see is why the program can't be moved or adjusted. Please understand that there is no other alternative program satisfying the need for both high-ability learners and learners who are more successful in smaller communities. The quarter-based system of honors classes given at the Middle College Program is a fundamentally different opportunity that can't be replicated by anything else OPS offers. And it shows in every student who is struggling to find a new home and every staff member straining to find creative solutions to accommodate us. You say that the program has run its course, but I find evident that it has not. We're not asking for mountains to be moved or for the program to continue forever and ever ask for. But I want it to be said that it would be nice if we could at least finish our high school education with each other. Like I said earlier, so many of us have had a rocky road to get here, and now we've finally found stability. I plead to you that I've already moved schools three times now, and I hate that it's becoming four. If you want to serve us as students, this is the absolute best way to do so, and I hope you can recognize this. If not that, then at least, sorry, then at least work with us to find solutions. We need from you more than just to send us placement specialists or to encourage us to check a box on your predetermined list. We need systemic work from the people with the power to make change, and that starts with you guys. I want to wrap up by saying that we really aren't trying to be a pain to the district or to make this process harder than it is. What we are trying to do is to exercise a skill which has been stressed to us since day one at the Middle College Program. We're advocating for ourselves. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me or any of my classmates. We would love to answer questions or give anyone that wants it a perspective from the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcus DonDiego.
Hello, my name is Marcus DonDiego. Though to many, I don't look like a Marcus. I don't act like one. I don't look like one. And it's those very sentiments that influenced myself to look for alternative schools. In a high school, in the scope of such a crowded environment, I'm denounced to nothing but a student among hundreds. In the preaching of teachers and parents alike, I'm supposed to believe that I matter, that I matter in a building of hundreds of students that can be prioritized and classified by how much better they are at learning than me. My struggles, my story is not put into question because to many, I am just another student. My affinity for the arts, my passion for writing, my disdain for math, none of it matters. And for you, I may just be another student kicking the dead horse, preaching for a program that you believe is better off closed and discarded for reasons that I don't know myself, nor do many of the affected students. I opted to join the UNO OPS Middle College Program to seek an atmosphere that was both welcoming and better for my education. And that's what I got. The UNO OPS Middle College quickly became a second home for me. The welcoming and supportive environment gave me the confidence to come out. It was a well-needed resource in such a detrimental era in my school career. Over my middle school years, that's when the pandemic struck. And it's then that everything that I knew, everything about school that I loved, fell from my hands. Academically, I improved. Though it may not have been such a drastic choice, both during the pandemic and the years following, I had almost completely lost my passion to graduate, to shoot higher. And I became to fall into the classification that I really was just another student. Before, I was a person, a person built off of countless struggles and stories of success. And finally, with the help of my teachers and peers, whom I have endless gratitude for, I finally mattered. I was more than a student with a prevalent history of a downward spiral. I was seen as a student who could graduate, a student with countless stories to tell. And after being given the opportunities to progress and reach the potential the teachers at the Middle College knew I had, it was stripped away from me. To say that the news crushed me would be an understatement. To think that I would lose this tight-knit community that I found so much solace in was the worst fate imaginable. We were told that there were other opportunities and programs for us, but then where are they? The UNO OPS Middle College is here to offer us more opportunities as future graduates, not just the students. There is no other program that offers the same opportunities for us. To many of us in the program, being sent back to our traditional high schools is the worst possible outcome. We have finally found our worth and place in the world, and the idea of losing ourselves in that scope of being nothing more than a student among hundreds is a fate worse than death. If somebody had told me I would lose my hope in my future like this, perhaps I would have been better off dropping out in my freshman year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Leah Melanson.
Hello, my name is Leah Melanson. I'd like to start off with thanking all of the board members who have reached out to me and all of my questions. I'm very grateful for all the information I have been given. Since the beginning of my school career, I have had vision boards with all of the top colleges. Cornell, Yale, and Harvard, those are big goals for a first-generation college student with zero college savings. But I was going to get into college with things like scholarships, savings, and full rides. But I didn't know how to get them, and neither did my parents. All I knew was that good grades meant good opportunities in college. So I started at a smaller school focused solely on bettering education, with maybe 64 kids in my grade. I learned better in a small community. I never finished elementary schools, as COVID took out the last quarter of my sixth grade year. Middle school was just a whirlwind that I barely experienced behind a faceless screen. And high school just wasn't working. I had teachers who refused to grade assignments or would give summative pop quizzes on stuff we were never taught. Students weren't much better, refusing to pitch in on a group project, causing you all to fail, or dumping out a pot bottle all over you and several other students as you tried to leave the building. I couldn't even use the bathroom regularly, as they were always locked because it was easier than monitoring who went in and out. I didn't learn. I felt worthless, and I had no support from my teachers, and the environment was extremely hostile. At the end of my freshman year, I felt stuck. So I went to my counselor, and I asked, "How do I get into college?" She did not give me a pamphlet or tell me to take different classes. No, she told me that the Middle College Program was the key to getting into college. As a former counselor for the program, she had amazing things to say about it. It was scary having to leave my normal behind for something so new, but the program saved me, and the teachers care, and the students want to learn. I love my school and everyone in it. When the program was canceled, I was heartbroken. I fell back into that anxiety pit of despair in my stomach. "Now what?" I asked myself, realizing the future I had planned out was gone. And still, after tons of research, I cannot find a proper replacement for the program. Yes, there are other alternatives, but none of them have my goals in mind. I either jump right into college with no community or help, or I take basic classes that can't give me that push I need to get into college. So far, my most promising option is going back to regular high school, as none of the other programs offer sufficient honors classes and no AP classes. I don't know if you've stepped into a modern high school lately, but I will tell you, they do not have my best interest in mind. I do not think I can handle that worthless feeling again, the weight of nerves and the overwhelming day-to-day life again. You tell me the program has run its course, but if that's true, then why are there over 30 displaced students with a year or two left of high school? Why can't you let us finish our school career with the amazing teachers, the free ACT prep and the college prep, and the 100% college acceptance rate this program had? The Middle College started in the UNO library, and I know many, if not all, of my peers and teachers here today would be willing to take these classes anywhere you put us. We don't need UNO to excel. As long as you keep us together until we graduate, we will go anywhere you put us. I understand you might not believe the program has worth anymore, but you cannot assume things about a place or people you haven't bothered to listen to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Harley Lawton.
Hello, I'm Harley Lawton. I started going to Middle College in my sophomore year of high school. It was the second semester of my sophomore year. After COVID, in my freshman year, I was very lost. I was struggling. I really had nothing to do with my grades. Essentially, I was basically at my wit's end. I did not think that I was going to be going to college, even though I thought that, even though before then, I had thought it was something I was always going to do. It started becoming not a when, but an if. And once I returned after COVID, all of that, just returning to a school that felt so broken while I was also struggling, it wasn't an environment for me, and it wasn't an environment for so many other people. So then my counselor told me about UNO Middle College. And I thought, "What an amazing little program." Like, there's not a lot of people here, but the teachers seem amazing. And I went there, and my grades went from being consistent Ds with the occasional C to being consistently Bs and As, maybe a C every once in a while. And even though I have since left Middle College, I'm still a student at Central. But I left Middle College not because it's a bad program, but because I wanted to be with my little brother during his freshman year of high school. And he wasn't going to go to Middle College. But I genuinely loved Middle College as a program, and so many other people loved it, too. So when I heard from my best friend that Middle College was closing, I really thought that they were joking. I was thinking, "What an amazing program." That essentially, every single person who has come out of this program has come out better. They've been given the tools to succeed from the people who work for the program and by the other students. I myself have met some of the most amazing people there, not just students, but teachers as well. And it helped me change, and it helped me change for the better. And I genuinely don't see why any of you could really let this school get shut down or this program get shut down, because you have the space, you have the teachers, you have the students, you have the community for it. If it's a question about money, then fundraising is always an option. I know it's not ideal, but you made this decision without any of us. And it won't affect you, but it will affect the 30 students that you are now displacing and leaving without a community that they have now been added into. And so please just think about that, because I know these people, and they don't deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kai Conrad.
My name is Kai Conrad. I live at 11710 Camden Avenue. I graduated last year from the Middle College. And I'm going to start this out by saying that I wouldn't have graduated high school without the Middle College. It was a combination of the academic challenge that I needed in order to stay focused and the sense of community that that entire, both the students and staff, managed to bring to the table. It's a program with the ability to actually care about its students because the teachers and staff can actually get to know the students. I hate to think about what would happen to all of the sophomores and juniors that are currently in this program when you send them back to a high school where they probably don't know people and they don't have that ability to make the connections with, on an interpersonal level, with their teachers. I'd hate to think of how many might drop out of high school as opposed to going on and succeeding in college, like the program intends. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Colleen Durante.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board President Mr. Head, Vice President Mr. Smith, and other board members. My name is Colleen Durante. That's C-O-L-L-E-E-N-D-U-R-A-N-T. I live at 1914 South 34th Street. First of all, you kids are amazing. I love every single one of you, and I want to give each one of you a big mom hug. To all of you on the board, thank you so much for serving OPS. It's a volunteer position. You guys get a lot of flack. And it's a huge commitment, so we appreciate you guys being here. I'm here to speak about Jackson Elementary. Next year, I will have my third child at Jackson. It's an amazing school, a dual-language school just down the street on 31st and St. Mary. Last week, we were told that our principal is being put in another building. Our principal is Ms. Suzanne Hagan. She came to Jackson in the school year 2019, 2020, right before the pandemic hit, from Cass Lahr. She has been an absolute gem. She has really engaged all the students. Every single kid absolutely adores her. Her staff respect her and seek out her input. She has improved the NScat scores. The English Language Arts scores from the year prior to her principalship to last year, the most recent numbers, improved 2.5 times the success rate. The math scores for NScat improved two times. That's huge in a small school with a very large EL population. Ms. Hagan is always super respectful, always professional, even when I try and get her to not be. She is always at bus duty. She is active with Field Day. She has engaged with our musical that our awesome pre-K teacher has started over the past two years. She gets great family night activities. In 2019, 2020, she helped us start a PTO for the, my understanding, for the first time there. With that, she has worked to get a mini-pitch, which is a, you know, enclosed soccer field. It's the only one in an elementary school in Nebraska, I think maybe even in the United States. She has worked to help get funding for the Disney musical, the PTO as a group. We have also really been able to, with her support, kick up, doing a lot of fundraising. And at the same time, she helps keep us, you know, in our reality that not all of our families can do that. Not all of our families have the ability to take off time from work to be here to advocate, although a lot of you guys are, and I love that you're here. She always wants to make sure that we're keeping those families in mind, keeping that their fundraising participation might just be thine popcorn at a movie night. So she has a great awareness of who her families are, and we absolutely love her. So last week, we were told that there is a little principal shuffle going on. My big concern, and a lot of our concern, is why was the community not engaged in this conversation? At the middle school, at the high school level, the principalships are posted publicly on the OPS Careers website. There are panel interviews done with the community, with the staff, with the parents. This was not done, both for Ms. Hagan's placement at Oak Valley or our new principal coming in
One minute.
From Beals. Currently, there are four elementary school students, four elementary principalships posted on the career page. posted on the career page. Fontenelle, Boyd, Prairie Wind, and Beals. I'm assuming that they're going to get multiple candidates to apply for those positions, finding the absolute best candidate for those schools, panel interviews, because I know that happens sometimes. Why not us? Why did we not get a voice in this decision?
30 seconds.
So we received a climate survey two days before the announcement from HR. Why did we not get a voice? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Lowens.
Hello, my name is Justin Lowens. My address is 1334 South 35th Avenue in Omaha. I am a parent of two. I also want to say that having to follow these teenage, these young people in their speeches, it's a little nerve-wracking, if I'm going to be honest. I'm a parent at Jackson Elementary. I have two kids that go there right now. Mrs. Hagan started, oh, I'm also participating in the, I'm an active member of our PTO. Mrs. Hagan started as our principal when my son Virgil started kindergarten. So that was my first experience with schools here in OPS. She's been amazing. She was instrumental in providing support and advice for the founding of our PTO. Four years later, as Colleen pointed out, we've spent thousands of dollars improving, raised and spent thousands improving our school grounds. She always pushes, as also highlighted there, the PTO to make sure that we are being inclusive and that all our families can participate in the activities that we plan. She happily greets students every morning, rain, sleet, or snow in the morning. She sets a positive tone for our school. For these reasons and many more, we are very disappointed that she's going to be moved. We just found out that she'll be moved to a new school. We feel strongly that she deserves the opportunity to continue the developing of the relationships that she has at our school, to continue the positive culture that she's created at our school, and to finish the work that she has started. We have a strong, positive, inclusive culture and Mrs. Hagan's leadership is a key reason why. We will continue to work to maintain that positive culture, but a change in leadership this soon into Mrs. Hagan's tenure at our school will disrupt our progress. As Colleen has pointed out, it's my understanding that other OPS schools, during their change in leaderships, had opportunities for input and we did not. We received a short email, like she said, a few days after the parent input survey, just saying that we have a new principal and that that was that. I look, I have heard a number of people at the administration talk about transparency and I look forward to working with this administration to create a more transparent and equitable process for transitioning in leaderships throughout the district, especially at the elementary level. And I also look forward to having a conversation about how we can keep Mrs. Hagan at our awesome school.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Ryan. Just as a reminder again, as a student, you don't have to give your address.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jason Ryan. As a senior at the UNO Middle College Program, I am proud to announce that I have been accepted to University of Nebraska Omaha this fall. I never thought I would get into college. I even, I never thought I'd even make it to 18. I want to take a moment to share a little bit about my story. As a transgender plus-size student of color, I have faced my fair share of challenges. From an early age, I have experienced discrimination in and around school. Despite the best efforts of my parents to protect me, I received beatings, I was objectified, harassed, and assaulted. And as I grew older and began to develop my gender identity, the discrimination only seemed to worsen. By the time I reached seventh grade, my middle school had even received a bomb threat due to my existence. By the time of my sophomore year, I had been pulled from my home school for mental health for two to three months and put in a mental institution. But even when I returned, and even though I had committed to extracurriculars and had the most wonderful high school friends at my home school, I felt horrified and always dreading the day ahead of me and my grades continued to tank. When I was offered the opportunity to attend the middle school program, I felt a glimmer of hope, that maybe I could finally feel safe and supported. And that is exactly what I found here. The middle college program provided me with a safe and supportive learning environment and therapy that worked for me. I was able to make friends, develop close relationships with my family, and most importantly, I was no longer afraid of school and my grades began to improve. But beyond my personal experience, I have seen how this program has helped so many others, students that may have struggled in traditional high schools due to several reasons such as violence, poor connections, or mental and physical issues. I came to the middle college program and found a community where your unique personalities were celebrated and encouraged. The teachers at the middle college program treated us with all the same respect and dedication, regardless of our backgrounds or struggles, that believed in our potential and helped us to see it in ourselves as well. I hope my story and that the countless others who have received help from the UNO OPS Middle College Program will be heard and considered. This program has provided a lifeline for so many students who may have otherwise fallen through the cracks and it would be a shame to see it go. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Our next speaker is Justin Riddle.
Oh, that doesn't extend. All this money on this new place and you guys can't get a mic for tall people or medium? I'm medium. Yes, I'm Justin Riddle. Good to see you guys. Justin Riddle, J-U-S-T-I-N-R-I-D-D-L-E, 16422-P-A-T-C-R-I-K Avenue. So, oh, I already mentioned the mic. And it looks like we're not being so authoritarian this week. People are allowed to clap. That's nice. I remember when you guys used to love telling us to stop. Don't clap! So, and it's also nice that you've responded to some of the students. Can I just hold this? There we go. It's also nice you've responded, oh. Yeah. Because, you know, obviously in three years, you haven't responded to one question I've asked. Now, Mr. Ray, it's great to see you. I'm glad they didn't choose the guy who fired all the school resources officers in Des Moines, because the fact that he made the top four just blows my mind, but not really with some of you guys on here, right? So, oh, can you pay attention, some of you? Because I've been watching you the whole time and gosh, it's like you don't care that the students are up here talking. You stare at that screen in front of you. They put those screens there to help you out? Got those screens there? Are you watching me or are you just? Oh, well, they're watching us, folks. So now I'm going to talk to you guys and let you know why I'm here. I'm dropping my lawsuit. April Fools. Ha! No. These folks right here, I'm going to be bringing in some more stuff. I've been coming for three years. They send the police after you if you speak against them. So, for example, some of you students might get calls at home tonight, because that's what they've done before. They suspended a kid that didn't pull his mask up fast enough between bites and then they called his parents and they sent the cops to his house. And I have all the proof and they know I have all the proof. It bothers them tremendously, but this is the fact. I don't look at them, because they don't care about the public. Now, I'm not saying nobody cares about anybody, but they don't care about the public in general and you can see it, because every one of you has been watching these folks up here tonight and you can see certain people like Nancy, who pay very close attention to everything that's being said. And then you see people like Ricky, who, maybe he's looking at that screen, but he hasn't looked over at a single person all night, right? Now, all of you guys should check out my website, selflegalaid.com, or www.charterwestbank.com, because Charter West screwed me. And, I'm sorry. And as a result, I bought their website and then won in the Supreme Court and now I'm taking these guys to court and you can all reach out to me and I will help you with your, the middle path. You know, I apologize not for having it all right, but whatever it is, let me know. I'm going to help you, because these folks know it. Hopefully you guys recognize that I'm not the crazy one here. They sent cops to my house. That chick on the end got a restraining order against me, because I said that I was going to try to get them all terminated and they would have leprosy. So unless I can cast a ancient disease on people, I probably didn't mean that, right? And, yeah. So, maybe you got, oh, one thing I've been asking for at least five months now, did you get hand dryers at North High School or do those students still have to go up three floors to wash their hands to go to the bathroom? They'll never answer, you guys, by the way, just so you know. They don't sit here silently for no reason. They sit here silent. This is why they put this here, right? So we used to have it right here in the middle. I know a lot of you are new. I've been coming here for years. This is the biggest crowd ever, so I'm like ready to dance. But you used to have it right here, but then you could see the crowd and they could see people's expressions and then they would know, oh my gosh, this person's saying something true. And then you see these guys and they're like, bleh! So, ah, community engagement, that must have been what I was saying, because you guys don't pay attention.
One minute.
Thank you. So, yeah, no, I was kidding. I am still suing you and I've got four other lawsuits and a bunch of Freedom of Information Act. And now that you're in charge, Mr. Ray, because you know I like you and we've had great conversations, a lot of you know I like you. It isn't personal. It is what it is. You're wrong, I'm right. I've got the facts. You used the cops to try to silence me. Who thinks that's acceptable? I'm a parent of four grad, well, four students, two not graduated.
30 seconds.
I graduated from OPS, blah, 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 blah. I have ADD, I forgot where I was going. Oh, no, I remember. Now that you're in charge, get the books out of the school that teach 10-year-olds how to be Scissor Sisters. Can we please do that? How many weeks do people have to come telling you about a hot Carl before you guys remove these books from the schools? Let's not be stupid. Just like they said, you don't ask for the community's engagement. That's what I meant by that.
And our final speaker for the evening is Monica Arroyo.
Hello, I'm Monica Arroyo, M-O-N-I-C-A-A-R-R-O-Y-O, 3560 Jackson Street. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Monica. Gracias por estar aquí hoy y por escuchar lo que tenemos que decir. Thank you all for being here and for listening to what we have to say. I am here as a testament to Jackson and its program in terms of what bilingualism and biculturalism can do for you. The only thing it's brought to my life has been nothing but positivity. That's why I knew in 2019, when it was time to pick elementary schools, that my son would be going to Jackson Elementary. We made sure we lived in the district that we would be able to send all of our children there. That's how much bilingualism means to me. In Jackson, we found a community of parents who found being bilingual just as important as we did, but moreover, they found being bicultural and multicultural just as important as we did. So, all that to say that when we got the email that there was a change in leadership and such a significant change in leadership, it blindsided us. And, you know, I read it in my email, the way it was communicated, and immediately my mind went to the other half of our community who isn't here today. The half that doesn't speak English, the half that doesn't check their email, the half of parents like my parents who are immigrants who don't speak English. When I look at that half of my community and I see that they are not here because they don't know the system, I come and I speak for them. Why? Because bureaucracy, sometimes people who don't make noise fall through the cracks. If you fall through the cracks, you're overseen. So I'm here to ask you, what are you going to do moving forward to engage our community who isn't here to meet you where you are, but where are you going to meet them? How are you going to communicate with them? The leadership we have in Hagan now sees that problem and is doing what they can. So my question is now with the incoming leadership, who are they? What are their values? Do they align with ours? How will you keep them accountable? If you don't know, Jackson Elementary is the Title I school. We have parents who do not know how the system works, do not know that we can keep our school board accountable. So I am here to speak for them. And I am here to ask that when you make changes like this, you ask for feedback, not in a passive way of a survey, but in a more active way. I also want to know what was done to assure that the incoming principal, that there was an element of equity in this position being filled? What are her qualifications? Was this posted so that other people, other Latina, women of color, would be aware, had a fighting chance to apply? I know from experience that Nebraska has dual-language teachers and I know that those teachers do not always stay in Nebraska. Kansas is poaching them, Illinois is poaching them. What are we doing to make sure our teachers stay here and that they have an equitable chance to be hired onto a program like the OPS Dual Language Program? And moreover, Jackson Elementary and its uniqueness. Jackson Elementary, in case you don't know, is the only elementary school that is fully dual-language. So moving forward, I ask of you, because I know that bilingualism and biculturalism, more than anything, it's a partnership.
One minute.
It's the coming of two different things to become one. And I am here to offer you my partnership as a parent. What can we do to make sure that this doesn't happen again, to make sure that we don't fall through the cracks, and to make sure that the people that aren't represented are engaged and that we're making the decisions that are best, not for us, but for our students and for the sustainability of the program and the students that are yet to come?
Thank you. And Monica, you are our last speaker for the evening. As a reminder, if anyone would like to leave us with comment that didn't get the opportunity to, please provide that to Dr. McFarland and she will make sure that everyone receives a copy. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. At this point, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda, considered and voted on separately. Do we have any motions to remove items?
Yeah. I'd like to ask a motion to item I-17.
Okay. Item I-17 is pulled. Any further motions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that's before us?
Some move.
Do we have a second? No, we're approving the rest of the consent agenda and then we'll go back to I-17. Second. A second from Mr. Tealyn. All right, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item I-16. It was, I-17, I apologize, that Ms. Juarez requested we remove. Do we have any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
Yes, you knew. I need to abstain from item I-6 and if I can also speak on behalf of Dr. Holman, she also is on item I-6 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further abstentions? All right, seeing none. As a reminder, we are voting on the approval of the consent agenda minus item I-17 with the abstentions of Ms. Cassidy and Dr. Holman on item I-6. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ted?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Nai Nai?
Motion carries. Thank you. Returning to item I-17, Ms. Juarez?
Thank you. Mr. Ray, I just wanted to know if you would explain to me, what does this item mean as far as approving this budget for non-public school resources? Could you elaborate on that for me, please? Mr. Ray, I just wanted to know if you would explain to me, what does this item mean as far as approving this budget for non-public school resources? Could you elaborate on that for me, please?
It's a yearly, if, and there's people in the audience that might correct me, a yearly purchase that we do for non-pubs.
Are you, do you mean private schools? Is that what it's for?
Non-public schools, yes. Not private specifically, but non-publics.
Okay.
Ms. Erdnberger?
Just to clarify, my understanding from the rationale is that these funds are reimbursed to us. So while we are the vehicle for purchasing these textbooks in cooperation with the private, or the non-public schools, once they are purchased, we get reimbursed. So this is not our public money going to non-public schools, which you know how I feel about that.
Yes, it's 100% reimbursable.
So basically, are they taking advantage of the bulk purchase kind of thing? Is that why they may pursue something like this with us?
Yes, ish.
Thank you. That's good clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Foll.
Mr. Ray, could you give me a few examples of maybe some of the non-public schools that these books would be going to?
I'm going to pick Susan Christopherson, if she has some specific schools that she can mention that would be getting these. Thanks, Susan.
And while she walks over here, I have another question maybe you can help me with. Is there any benefit to us or is it more like a community benefit as to why we're doing something like this? Or why are we specifically doing this?
These schools are within the Omaha Public Schools boundaries.
Yes, these, we support non-public schools to ensure that they have the opportunity to purchase similar textbooks that we have done and vetted as well. We have done this as a long-time practice as a part of the textbook loan experience. So we work directly with all of the non-public schools that are a part of the Omaha Public Schools boundaries to ensure that we are providing and supporting high-quality textbooks in their schools. They let us know what it is that they're interested in doing. The legislature, it actually changes for next year. This will be the last year that it actually funnels through the Omaha Public Schools. And next year, we'll actually funnel through the Nebraska Department of Education. So this would be the last time our board will see it on the agenda for books that we helped to purchase to get in the hands of students in the non-public schools. It's a part of the procedure. Anything else to add?
Just to be clear, it was previously a statutory requirement for each public school to provide books. So we have to do this statutorily. They are removing that statute and just going directly through NDE starting June of 2024. But this is the last year for the 24, 25 school year that you have to do it. Just to add and explain kind of why we do this on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Crackey.
I know we have done this for years and years and years, forever, I think. Does this mean next year, if they're on their own, that they will not select the same book we are selecting? That's a possibility, it seems. Would that be correct?
Correct.
I can't imagine that they wanted to do that, or anyone did, or whoever did that. Because I think we're taking the load off of them. I know we get as many as eight companies, six companies, five companies. They come in with all their books and then a committee goes and chooses the best selection. So I just thought that they would rather be with us than without us.
It was the legislature in their infinite wisdom, take that for how you want to take it, that decided that this was a good idea. So they will still be working through the Nebraska Department of Education to get their books. So they won't necessarily be on their own next year. But yeah, in prior years, the school district has been required to purchase curriculum for non-publics that are within our boundaries, much like we, you know, provide special education services to, to the non-publics that are within OPS boundaries as well. Do we have any further questions, comment on item I-17?
Are we going to have to put forth a motion now?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, do we have a motion to approve item I-17?
Yes, I'll move for that.
All right. Motion by Ms. Juarez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to information items, item J-1A, Policy Committee Update with Mr. Tealyn.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Policy Committee met on, got it somewhere, March 20th. And in attendance, all members, myself, Ms. Erdnberger, Ms. Juarez, and Mr. Head, we discussed the Code of Conduct. We had, in fact, I think we had one other meeting between, between these two. This Friday? Yeah, this last Friday. Where we finalized the Code of Conduct questions, we've continued to work through the 8000s. And, you know, I think those, those policies and the policies we've been discussing are going to be on the approval. So I think we'll discuss those then. We've also continued to have some discussions on Superintendent Evaluation and the, starting to talk about a board workshop in the summer to address next steps on our next strategic plan. I think that's all I have for the update, so if we can move on to the next item.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so tonight we've got information item on a number of policies that are included on the agenda. I guess, actually, the first thing we have is Code of Conduct, which I guess we'll let, yeah, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Williams, with the Code of Conduct revisions, we'll introduce as item J-1B. Thank you.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board of Education and Interim Superintendent Ray. We come to you tonight to share our recommendations for the 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct. The code is designed to provide guidance to school administrators in applying disciplinary action, intervention strategies, and behavior resolutions for all Omaha Public School students, grade kindergarten through 12. The code is also a communication tool to assist families and students in becoming familiarized with potential consequences of violations of the school rules. Each school additionally has multi-tiered systems of support for behavior plan that designs how each school will teach students appropriate school behavior and maintain welcoming, safe, and engaging school environments. Each year, we convene a Code of Conduct Review Committee comprised of school principals, elementary, middle, and high, alternative education program directors, administrators, deans, teachers, OEA leadership, school safety, and other student and community services staff members. Each perspective is critical and has provided insight from across our system. We have had the opportunity to present the draft of the 2024-25 Code to the Policy Committee of this board. Based on discussion and member feedback, we have made an adjustment to the plan that we will discuss this evening. Before we begin, I want to confirm that you have the documents that I will be referencing this evening. First is the 46-page 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct Red Line Draft. Next is the four-page summary of all recommended changes since the last board adoption in 2023. And finally, we have included a PDF copy of the PowerPoint presentation with the recommended changes. Before we begin the review, I would like to make a few comments regarding the Student Code of Conduct in order to help provide context for its purpose and its intended use in schools. The Student Code of Conduct is one of three documents that make up each school's student and family handbook. First, there are the school-specific pages with information about the individual school environment. Next, we have the district handbook, three versions aligned to elementary, middle, and high school with information about academics, curriculum, health, nutrition services, and so forth. The third section of the handbook is the Student Code of Conduct. Our code intentionally provides latitude in applying consequences because it is applied to individuals age 5 to 21 with varying levels of, or at varying stages of development, excuse me. The Student Code of Conduct communicates that we have rules and expectations for the learning environment. And when there is a violation of those expectations, there will be a response. Sometimes that response will rise to the level of removing a student from the learning environment for a period of time. Making these determinations is a responsibility that we take very seriously. The Student Code of Conduct is also a guideline for our administrators when responding to student behavior incidents. We use this resource in training with staff, students, and families. Behavior is a form of communication and we approach misbehavior as an indicator of a need for additional support. Our goal is not to punish students for misbehavior. It is to identify resources and intervention to support a student in reaching desired outcomes. At the same time, we must also support the purpose of school and maintain a safe and respectful learning environment. Finally, while we refer to the Student Code of Conduct as a code, it is not intended as an adaptation of the Criminal or Civil Code. It is not intended to codify every potential behavioral situation. It is not all-encompassing. For all of these reasons, we commit to a revision process every year. And we begin each school year by sharing the Student Code of Conduct with all students, families, and staff, teaching about expectations for the learning environment and possible responses when there is a violation. We will now turn to our current recommended updates. Our intention with this presentation is to highlight all changes to the code that impact its meaning even slightly. The summary document and the corresponding red line draft provide every single change that has been made, including those in the interest of consistency, clarity, and/or grammar. Fortunately, due to previous leadership in this work, we have few significant changes tonight. We are proposing to add the developmental level of the student to the list of considerations applied to misbehavior at school. These are the items that school administrators consider when applying discipline. As a side note, on each slide, you will see the corresponding page number of the red line draft so that you can follow along. These page numbers will not necessarily match the page numbers of the final formatted version of the 24-25 code. As you can see in this chart, Level 3 violations may result in a short-term suspension. It is included in the code that in situations of multiple suspension of a particular student, that staff will put together a plan of support for that student. This change here updates the language we are using to discuss those plans. The Early Intervention Plan is a relatively new document that we are using. Additionally, schools have expanded into multi-tiered systems of support, Tier 2 and Tier 3. And interventions may be available at one or both of those levels at any particular school. These are interventions at Level 2 that are generally no longer in, available in most schools. So that we are proposing that we take these out from the list. The two updates on this slide are the most significant that we are recommending in terms of changes to the code. The first update is to add a Level 4 indicator to the violation Assault No Injury. You'll notice that the violations in the code are organized by level of severity, with Level 4 being the most serious. If you look at page 17 of the red line document as an example, you will see the Level 3 table. To the right side of the table, you will see which levels each violation could be addressed, at which each levels, each violation could be addressed based on the circumstances. You'll see that a number of Level 3 violations can rise to be addressed with a Level 4 response based on the situation. The recommendation to add a Level 4 indicator to Assault No Injury came about due to concerns that an instance of assault could be very serious, but may not necessarily result in an injury or does not result in an injury that can be documented. For instance, if a victim does not feel safe giving a statement. Guidance from the review team indicated that on occasion, a Level 4 consequence is the most appropriate response to this violation. We are also recommending that we add this additional language to page 19 of this document, which introduces Level 4 Violation Interventions and Responses, which are the most serious. I'll give you a moment to read through the language. I want to be clear, this language does not add additional violations or resolutions to this code. It is intended to speak to the critical importance of our teachers and staff in our schools as well as our desire as a district to support those individuals. Intentional violence against staff is demoralizing and damaging to school culture and school mission. The code review team overwhelmingly agreed that a concern for our staff, for their safety, for their retention, satisfaction, and feeling hopeful every day that they can make a difference was of critical importance. Teachers, administrators, principals, the OEA representatives, and district administrators all felt that we needed to review this topic and discuss what we could do in the context of the Code of Conduct. Along with the rest of the code, this language serves as a communication tool for our stakeholders. Violence against school staff is already addressed with our most serious consequences, of course, taking into account the age of the student, developmental level, intent, severity, and all factors that are relevant when applying, when applying discipline in the school setting. As stated earlier, most of the changes that you will see on the documents provided are made in the interest of consistency and in clarity. Here are examples of those changes that you will see the most often. When OPS policy is referenced, it will be in this format. Student Code of Conduct is always bold and underlined. When providing examples, EG is used in lieu of other options. Here, the first sentence of this section effectively describes our practice regarding misconduct between semesters or between school years. The remainder is stricken as it refers to practice no longer in place. You will notice a number of updates to the sections on attendance practices on pages 43 through 45. Overall, there's a shift in focus from strive-for-95 language to more specificity about how each group can support student success via good attendance practices. Some language is recommended to be removed due to repetition. In this code, we are recommending the section on surveillance cameras be replaced with updated language that reflects current practice. I'll give you just a moment to read through that language. I'll give you just a moment to read through that language. Finally, this year, we are looking to serve our community by providing the code in additional languages. We have consulted with district staff to begin the work, and we plan to provide the 2024-2025 code in five to seven additional languages. This concludes the proposed revisions of the OPS Code of Conduct. At this time, we ask this Board of Education to approve the first reading, 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Turn it back over to Mr. Teelen.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. First, just thank you for the thoughtful work of you and your team in going through these changes and the really thoughtful changes that were made. The Policy Committee has already seen these in detail and approved them, so this is a committee motion that I'll make now on behalf of the committee. Of course, I'm sorry, it is information, so we're going to have this as information, first reading and second reading, but certainly welcome questions at this time. If there are questions, we would like to get them out as quickly as possible. As you all know, there's always pressure to get the Code of Conduct approved so that the process can continue and we can get it published in time for students in the fall. Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Holman?
Thank you, Mr. Teelen. I just have a question. I'm in the, I believe, the Red Line version. Can somebody explain to me, I was trying to get to the glossary, but I'm not, my computer's scrolling quickly enough. I saw on page eight, it talked about deadly weapon, that was added in red. So can you explain to us what is considered deadly versus dangerous, I saw on another page? And then I also saw that firearm is, I believe it said like an automatic, I could be incorrect in saying this, but possibly a reassignment or what have you, but what is the difference between dangerous and deadly, and how is that determined?
Dr. Williams, feel free to take this, otherwise we can also get counsel. This is partly in response to law changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would certainly welcome counsel if they wanted to jump in. Deadly, in specific to the law regarding students in pre-K through two, deadly is part of the statute.
Deadly is, okay.
So we wanted to update that.
I think it's something that causes death, and it's not something we can make a situation cause death. I mean, I think a pencil, I use a pencil as a great example, right? You probably could cause death with a pencil, but I would say generally speaking, that's not what the law is referring to. We're talking about a blade that is of a certain length, not a short, not a short pocket knife or anything like that. It's a blade of a certain length, and we're talking about, you know, something that could bludgeon someone or seriously injure or take a limb from them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I had a question, I think it's on slide number five, about taking out the school transition program. And I was just wondering if I could get more context. I know you said that we don't do that anymore, is that what you said? But what was that, and why did we decide to discontinue it? Yes?
That's a good question. Mr. Ried, do you want to take it?
So the school transition language came about when we closed Wilson Alternative School 12 years ago-ish?
14.
What's that?
14.
14, thanks, Amy, Dr. Williams. And we had transition rooms put in place in place of that alternative school, and so those transition rooms haven't been in place for a while.
I think there were a few more high school rooms that were hanging on for a little while with this, a similar sort of purpose.
What is the purpose of the rooms? Like, what happens in there?
We completely removed the middle school alternative, and so we provided schools and some high schools a place for the kids that would have gone to Wilson to be housed in the school.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's definitely not what I thought that was going to mean, so that's good I asked the question. But I guess still on the same topic, I didn't see anything in the presentation or in the Red Line version of, and I was kind of hoping for it when I saw the school transition program, which is why I was asking the program, or the question, about what we do for students who get reassigned to different schools for whatever reason. I know I've asked that question a multitude of times. I've seen situations, I'm not going to get into specifics, obviously, where, you know, a student is reassigned to a different school or a different program, and maybe, you know, the proper plan isn't in place, the proper accountability for the student isn't in place, support systems, figuring out how they're going to get to school, like, all that kind of stuff. I just don't want us to drop the ball on students when they're being reassigned, and I was wondering if there was any, you know, plans to include something like that in the Student Code of Conduct so we have, you know, policies and procedures that we follow so when a kid goes to a different school, there's a plan in place to help them succeed when they get there. In my experience, that's not what I've seen. I could be, I could be remiss, like, maybe I just didn't, you know, I haven't experienced it yet, I just really don't want to drop the ball on those students, so.
I appreciate that question, because neither do we. You know, I hadn't considered that that would become a part of the Code of Conduct, but I do hear what you're saying in regard to you wanting it to be as part of policy. We do have things in place that should be happening, so I'm, you know, I guess interested in hearing some of your, what you've experienced and what you've heard. I can get our current, our current processes to Dr. McFarland.
I would really appreciate that, thank you. And I wanted to make this conversation as germane as possible to the information item, but I also did want to acknowledge the students in the room. I'm so glad that you're still here. And I just want to commend you on speaking up and what you believe in, and, you know, the policies and the procedures that we pass and the decisions that we make at this board table affect our students and their families every single day. And I want you to know that I am disappointed to hear that the program is discontinuing, just listening to what you have to say. And I don't want to make this about myself, but I do have to say, I come from, on an alternative program as well, from high school. And so I understand how important stability is for you, and when that's, you know, taken away, that has real-life implications on your future and what you will be able to accomplish for the rest of your life. And being in a small community and in a small environment is an absolute game changer for a lot of students, including myself, when I went through my alternative program. And so I, I really just want to reiterate to the board, you know, sometimes I feel like the things I say fall on deaf ears, but it doesn't matter what the curriculum is, because you are obviously extremely, extremely knowledgeable, talented students, but you weren't in the right environment. And then when you got there, you thrived, and you didn't look back. And so I just want to, I just want the rest of the board members to keep that sentiment in their hearts, and, you know, moving forward with the decisions that we make that impact our students, please just, please just remember that stability is so important in a child's life, and when we take that away, like I said, it will, it will affect them for the rest of their life.
Ms. Kradke?
I want to go back to the two words that were, that Dr. Holman mentioned, deadly and dangerous. It was said that it can be dangerous but not deadly. From personal experience, I'm going to tell you, dangerous and deadly go together. I mean, if it's dangerous, it can definitely be deadly. So I don't know, there isn't a clarification on that? Can you tell me?
Can you tell me where you're referring to dangerous? Like, that page?
It was earlier that the question was asked. Dr. Holman, could you repeat your question?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I believe it was page 17, but I'm not for certain. In the Red Line copy.
I'm not seeing it. If you don't mind, I can follow up with Dr. McFarland on that one as well.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
I said, I'm not seeing it on that page, but I can certainly follow up with Dr. McFarland on that, on that question, the dangerous versus deadly.
I just want to go back to what that question was and what your answer was, because I don't think that I fully understand what's going on with that.
So, Mrs. Kradke, the statute defines what a deadly weapon is. And so while it can be incredibly dangerous, just like you said, just like the pencil example that I gave you, it isn't, it cannot be dangerous, it can only be deadly. And that is the only thing that we're allowed to use under the statutory definition. So the statute defines what deadly.
I'm not sure what you just said. Can you use the microphone better like Mr. Ried did?
Sure.
It sure made a huge difference.
I would be happy to bend down.
Thank you, that's beautiful.
And, and so it is, deadly is defined by statute, okay? It is a specific, while we all think a pencil might be very deadly, could kill someone if used properly, I was thinking about Lessons in Chemistry, I don't, I don't know if anybody read that book, but it is not something that our statutory scheme defines as a deadly weapon. That's a dangerous weapon, but it is not a deadly weapon. And so we can only do statutorily what a deadly weapon is. So it has to be a blade of a certain length, those types of things. And so I appreciate the, your practical, but the statute doesn't, doesn't go into the practicalities of that.
I want to continue with the question and the answer, because a pocket knife is dangerous and it's deadly, and that was what was referred, a pocket knife and the length of it, it doesn't have to be very long to be deadly.
And that's what the statute defines as deadly, so it has to be over a certain length.
We better look at the statute, because this is not accurate. My personal experience tells me.
Understood. And I, there is definitely different experience, just like I made the pencil example, there's definitely different experiences out there. Unfortunately, the statute is fairly prescribed, and it says that the blade has to be of a certain length.
We better look at the statute, and somebody better look at it, and I can go with you to talk about it if you like. Thank you.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Head. I'm going to move to shout-out mode. I would like to shout out to the revisions that were made to the Code of Conduct. I really appreciate the addition of Assault No Injury. It used to be only a Level Two or Three, so adding it that it has the potential to be a Level Four with Level Four consequences, I think, is really important, and I know that this is something that is important to all of our staff members. And with that in mind, the language that was added on the Red Line, page 19, about violence against school staff is an egregious act which not only jeopardizes the safety and well-being of individuals, but also undermines the foundations of our ongoing efforts to maintain a safe and secure environment that is conducive to teaching and learning, I won't read the whole thing, but I really appreciate that you worked with a group of people to whom this matters a lot, to come up with language that everybody could agree on as best as you ever can under these circumstances, and that we are stating that in the affirmative, there was no really, there was no other good place to sneak it into the description of the behaviors or the consequences, so just stating it in the affirmative. My other shout-out is to my fellow board member, Ms. Juarez, who I remember at our meeting said, "Is the Code of Conduct translated into anything other than English and Spanish?" And thank you for looking into that and coming back to us at our next meeting. And as you said earlier, we are taking steps to have the Code of Conduct translated into our top five language groups that are represented out of the 103 that we have, or whatever the number is at OPS, but shout-out to Ms. Juarez for making sure that happened, and for you for following up. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much. That was a good conversation.
Thank you. And one other thing, I know we spent a considerable amount of time in our committee meetings talking about cellphone use in the classroom, and, you know, whether or not that's currently allowed under the, under the Code of Conduct. Obviously, it's something that we don't want students, you know, utilizing cellphones in the classroom, we want them learning. And we wanted to make sure that the code gave our, you know, teachers and staff enough latitude that they felt like they could, you know, manage their classrooms and keep students off of, off of their phones. I think the committee was fairly split as far as, you know, if the, if the current code goes far enough, and, or if we wanted to beef it up a little bit, just for the, you know, knowledge of teachers who might be listening, you know, what do we have in the current code that allows them to, or gives them some cover if they're, you know, taking students' phones away or telling students that they, you know, district policy prohibits use of cellphones in classrooms?
There is so much about, about cellphones in this code. Let me flip through. It's toward the end, and there's nearly two full pages, or maybe just a little bit more. Starting on the page 38 from the document that's attached to this agenda, all, all the way till 40, and I, I don't know that I can do a good job summarizing all of that in this moment, but, but absolutely, as a district, we know that cellphones are extremely distracting. It is very difficult to pay attention to your cellphone and also learn the content that is so important for you to learn. And I assure you that, that holding students accountable for being on task in the classroom and doing everything you can to support them in doing that is covered in the code. And we can, we can get more specific, if you would like me to get some more information to Dr. McFarland.
Thank you. Any further questions, colleagues? Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. Just a quick question. First of all, thank you, Dr. Williams, for your work and the committee, Policy Committee, and of course, Code of Conduct Committee. Particularly, I'll kind of echo Ms. Erdenberger, for your work on the Level Four. That shows true commitment to our staff, focusing on that violence against school staff. It was definitely needed, and I think something that all of us would agree was really a focus that we wanted you to take, so thank you for that. My quick question, and it's very quick, has to do with the area on surveillance cameras. Obviously, we already have cameras on school buses, and this will continue with our new provider, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And then it also states various public spaces in school buildings. Can you kind of elaborate and give us an idea of typical spaces that cameras are in our buildings?
I can. I guess it would be the areas that you would consider public spaces, so the main office, hallways, cafeteria, you know, those sorts of spaces. Entrances, exits, the, outside, around those, around those entrances and exits.
That's what I was going to ask, are they, are we outside and inside as far as? Are they, are we outside and inside as far as public spaces?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Told you it'd be an easy question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for your work. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item J1C, update on policies with Mr. Teelen.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, so we've got, as I mentioned, a number of policies that are being updated. We took quite a while with these policies, more than we have with other sections. These are the 8000s. This is the section that specifically applies to internal board policy and governance, how we work together, and expectations around board service and process. So I'm going to go through a few of these, but there's, like I said, there's a lot here. This is uninformation. Feel free to ask questions about anything you've got, but I'm going to hit a few highlights. First, not in the 8000s, the 4007, the employee leave policy, was updated with mostly technical updates and clarifications conforming to practice. A number of these policies, there's really just technical updates. We also updated 4046. This is actually, will be a new policy reflecting much the same language that existed before, that used to be in 8232. So 8232 is in the 8000s. It's a board policy, internal policy, but it actually covered employees as well. And so what we did is we separated out the employees and put that in the 4000s where it belongs. So we really mirrored that. There's obviously some things that apply to board and some things that apply to employees. So they are a little bit different, but it's largely mirrored the way it was before. The one policy difference is that we went from a change in the reimbursement rate for travel for employees and the board. It used to be that board members and employees would get a reimbursement on a per diem basis based on the rate for Omaha. It'll now be based on the rate for the location that you're traveling to, which we felt was more fair to employees and the expenses that they're incurring in those places and the boards following suit. So that's 4046 and 8232. 8232 is the board policy. 8110 and 8120, these are rules that the board sets for itself and duties. We've updated this to be consistent with practice. We've also clarified the expectation that board members represent the district in all circumstances. There is going to be an additional change, we expect, to 8172 that's not reflected in the version that's been uploaded. That's the Code of Ethics, which is really aspirational about how we act as board members. And we expect that there will be consistent updates to that policy, talking about expectation about reflecting, you know, actions that reflect well on the board and the district and that demonstrate respect for all people in all circumstances, whether at a formal board meeting or on social media or wherever it might be. 8210 is orientation. We, so this is orientation of new board members. Nothing big here, but we, the changes reflect more direct involvement from the board in the onboarding process and an opportunity to participate as a refresher as some of us, you know, get further away from the orientation and some of the specifics. So if you want to jump in on orientation as a refresher, you can do that. And then determining the content of orientation, so just a more direct involvement in making sure that we as board members are giving input on what we think new board members need to know. 8230, attendance at functions. We've removed a requirement that after individual board members attend a conference, that they would submit a report to the board. Just really wasn't seen as useful, and so we've removed that from the policy. 8261, conflict of interest. We changed the policy to disallow board members from being employed by the district. So previously, as you may know, as Mr. Head was an example, Mr. Head served as an OPS bus driver for a little while. No problems, but just to avoid any conflicts of interest there, we updated our policy and decided that that was a good idea. Let's see, I think that those are the main policy. I'm just going to go through here and just see if we had any other major policy concerns. There is one change to... Agenda construction, 8343. So this is determining what goes on the agenda and how board members might get something on the agenda that's not already on the agenda, mostly to clarify and put some process in place. The policy previously suggested that any three board members could get an item placed on the agenda with a request, you know, with a request of three or more board items, or board members, you could get something on the agenda. It wasn't fleshed out in the process very well, and so we added some process around that and some limitations to make it more reasonable, too. I think those are the main policy differences. But at this point, I'll take any questions. Obviously, we'll have another opportunity to talk about this at the first reading in the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Teelen, and thank you for your work on the committee. I know it's been very active over the past few months to get here, going over essentially the entire 8000 series. So thank you again. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Paul?
Thank you. I should have looked this up really before this meeting, but do we have a specific policy for, maybe I should be a little louder. Oh, okay. So do we have a specific policy for social media use as board members?
We do not.
Okay. Is that something that you have discussed? I was, I know we've discussed it before, and so I just saw this huge swath of policies, and I wondered, you know, if there ever was a time, maybe that now would be it. So, yeah. Just love an update about that.
We discussed it in great detail. And the decision was that there's not a whole lot that we would put into policy, but the change that we are, the change that we are making to, I've forgotten what number it is. Yeah, the Code of Ethics, right, policy. And that's the one that hasn't been updated yet, but will be updated. And it's not a big social media policy, but it does reference the expectations around behavior on social media, respecting all people, those kinds, those same kinds of things that we expect of board members in other circumstances, that we would expect that in any interactions on social media. But there's not really any other, kind of the technical stuff that some boards or organizations have.
So if there is any language, just to clarify, if there is any language about social media use as a board member, it would go in the Code of Ethics?
You know, we could put it, we could make a new policy. We could put it somewhere else. It would go somewhere in the 8000s, though.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Teelen, thank you. And we will move on now to action items. Item J2A, approval of the report of the Legislative Committee, including recommended legislative positions. Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you very much, President Head. And Ms. Nelsbrash is making her way to the microphone because she knows I'm going to rely on her. Basically, there are very few days left in the legislature. What they've done, as I mentioned at our last board meeting, is lump them together, bills together as much as possible so that they can be voted on in whole. The easy report I'm going to give you is that LB 1284 now includes virtually all of the teacher retention and recruitment policies that were out there. I'm sorry, bills that had been suggested, including the one that was initiated by OPS. It also has a couple reading program bills in it. That one has a very large price tag on it, and we are waiting to see what cuts are going to be made to it because the chances of the $20 million package passing through, there doesn't appear to be any opposition to the bills that are included in it, but there is some energy around the cost, so to speak. The larger issue is LB 1331, which we had already taken a position against, but it was a fairly innocuous bill at the time. It has now been amended to cover sort of an upheaval of education funding that reflects, to a certain extent, the governor's desire to move revenue from property tax over to other sources like sales tax, which means, which is the reason that it's still sort of in play, because there are a lot of people that see sales tax as a tax on a different group of people than obviously property tax, and is that fair? But that's not our job. Our job is to look at the education funding as a result. And I think now I'm going to turn it over to Megan Orta Shane, who has a really cool PowerPoint explaining what's going on.
Thank you very much, Ms. Erdenberger. Really cool PowerPoint, and school funding should not be uttered in the same sentence at all. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide an update on the school funding activity that is happening down in the legislature. We'll start with a recap of Revenue Committee Bill 388, Amendment 3203. This bill primarily would increase the sales tax rate and eliminate exemptions, generating up to $650 million in new revenue annually, per estimates provided in discussion on the legislative floor. We have not seen a fiscal note from the Legislative Fiscal Office, but based on debate, it's estimated that that would be $650 million. It could be up to a one cent increase in the sales tax based on the amount of actual receipts at the end of the current fiscal year. If receipts come in over expectations and estimates, in statute, it could structurally be reduced to a lower amount, three quarters, one half, or one quarter cent. So that portion is still yet to be determined. Exemptions eliminated in the bill would be for dry cleaning services, pet-related veterinary services, and sales tax would be imposed on candy and soft drinks, which are specifically defined in the proposed legislation. LB 388 would also impose a 100% sales tax on hemp and CBD products. Again, without a legislative fiscal note, we don't know what type of revenue that is anticipated to generate. It would also increase the cigarette tax by 36 cents, with that entire 36 cent amount being directly allocated to the Education Future Fund. Based on a review of past revenues for the cigarette tax, we're estimating that would be approximately $24 million annually to help bolster the Education Future Fund for foundation aid and special education. The other key piece, the one key piece that this really affects for us as a school district would be a change to the board override of revenue caps established by LB 243 last year. Your ability to add an additional 4% of property tax revenue in future years remains in statute under this proposed amendment, but it would remove any unused authority from the carryover amount in future years. There is some indication that there could potentially be an amendment if the bill reaches select file that would remove the board override amount from calculation of the base revenue in future years, and that would be extremely detrimental to school districts. That would effectively make the board override provision a one-time, use it or lose it, and then have to maintain the board override in perpetuity to not have a revenue shortfall. If you passed a 4% override and then didn't pass it the following year, we would effectively have a net revenue reduction in the second year and would have revenues lower than the previous year. So it's very important that we remain vigilant on this if it does make it to select file, to see if that particular provision happens. Moving on to the Education Committee Bill 1331, specifically Amendment 3264. This outlines how the legislature would provide additional funding to school districts and thus provide the desired property tax relief. The first thing it would do would be eliminate the LB 1107 income tax credits for school property taxes paid. That was slated to be up to $560.7 million of property taxes, income tax credits, excuse me, in the 2023 income tax year. This would sunset that provision for tax years 2024 and beyond and appropriate the amount of the tax credits to school finance reform. It would also increase foundation aid just passed last year from $1,500 per student to $3,000 per student, and it would increase the portion from the Education Future Fund from 24% to 57.3%. This legislation would also move up the timing of how much of foundation aid counts as a resource in TOSA by one year. Currently, this past year and the upcoming year, the foundation aid was calculated 100% as a resource in the calculation of equalization aid for TOSA. It was scheduled to be reduced down to only 60% beginning with the '25-'26 school year. This amendment would move that up one year, and that would be a benefit for us as an equalized school district and provide greater equalization aid. LB 1331 would appropriate $750 million for direct reduction of school district property tax requests. This is called the Allocated Property Tax Fund. Aid would be allocated prorata based on a school district's prior year property tax request. And this $750 would be scheduled to increase by $30 million annually after the '24-'25 year. So that would be a 4% increase in the first year of an increase in '25-'26. And then with the flat $30 million increase, that percentage increase would decline eventually over the years. It would also increase the annual transfer from the General Fund to the Education Future Fund from $250 million annually to $1.5 billion annually, beginning in '25-'26. In total, the proposed legislation would increase state funding for school districts by $1,173 million, virtually doubling the amount appropriated for state aid for '24-'25. And because of the LB 243 property tax asking lids, this would, virtually all of this new funding would go to, directly to property tax relief. Only board overrides would cause some of that funding not to go directly to property tax relief. The Nebraska Department of Education released their model of the implementation of this legislation on Monday, March 25, again, showing state aid increasing from $1,163 million to $2,336 million, effectively 100% increase in state aid. Because of the increase in foundation aid, equalization aid will drop $45.1 million. And our modeling of the allocation of this cost would be an additional $422.8 million for foundation aid would have to be appropriated, and $750 million for the direct property tax relief. Based on how the amendment is written, that would be $1,173 million increase in appropriations from the Education Future Fund and a decrease of $201 million from the General Fund. These two tables show how the proposed legislation would impact current state. Currently, there are 60 equalized school districts receiving $500 million approximately. That would be reduced to 53 school districts receiving $455 million. Foundation aid would double from $468 million to $936 million. Foundation aid would double from $468 million to $936 million. There would be the addition of the $750 million for direct property tax subsidy aid. And then other aids such as the poverty allowance or the allocated income tax would remain the same at $194.7 million. So again, virtually doubling the amount of the state would invest in state aid. What does that look like for school districts across the state? Millard Public Schools would see their state aid increase from $64 million to $133 million, 108% increase. Lincoln Public Schools would see their state aid increase from $73 million to almost $210 million, 187% increase. Whereas we would increase from $317 million to $453.6 million, a 43% increase. In total, Douglas, Sarpy, and Lancaster County School Districts would see their state aid increase from $638 million to $1,179 million, almost an 85% increase, while school districts and all other counties in the state would see their portion of state aid increase by 120% or $631 million. So we feel that the thing that we need to do to plan ahead for the potential passage of this legislation is look and see what impact it would have on specifically the Education Future Fund and on the State General Fund. So this table before you is from the 2024 Appropriations Committee Recommendations regarding future balances of the Education Future Fund. I think I would focus primarily on the total appropriations and the fund balance at the bottom of the page. Total appropriations are approximately $350 million annually. And you'll see the projected fund balance decreases incrementally over time from $677 million at the end of the current fiscal year to $461 million at the end of fiscal year '26-'27. This shows a structural deficit built in between the appropriations anticipated out of the fund and the $250 million annual transfers that are scheduled to be put into the fund. I'd also call attention to the special education line towards the middle of the page. There was a $27.5 million deficit request for additional special education funding based on actual expenditures by school districts across the state. This increase for the '23-'24 school year was not flowed through into future years. You'll notice there's an anticipated decrease in the '24-'25 school year. I don't think anyone expects special education expenditure statewide to decrease in future years. And so when we made our reprojection on the next slide, we included increases annually based on the revised amount for '23-'24. So this is what the Education Future Fund impact would look like assuming LB 1331 is passed. Transfers in from the General Fund increased to $1.5 billion annually, beginning in '25-'26. Transfers in other includes the implementation of the increase in the cigarette tax. That would be scheduled to go into effect on January 1, 2025. So we're only including approximately $12 million of new revenue in '24-'25, but the full $24 million in future years. We reforecasted the investment income based on about a 2.8% annual rate of return that the Investment Council gets on the state investment pool. And then we adjusted the special education funding for that $27.5 million deficit, increasing it by approximately 3.5% annually, and adjusted the amount of foundation aid to $3,000 per student, beginning in '24-'25, and 57.3% of that foundation aid coming out of the Education Future Fund. Also factored in is the $750 million in the allocated property tax funds, beginning in '24-'25, with $30 million increases annually in subsequent years. Again, you'll see, based on the progression of the fund balance at the bottom of the page, there is a significant structural deficit built in to the appropriations and the anticipated revenues for the Education Future Fund, declining from $672 million at the end of the current year to approximately $275 million at the end of '26-'27. And if we roll those forecast projections out two additional years, the fund goes negative in the '28-'29 budget year for the state based on the assumptions that we have in the LB at this point in time. So that $1.5 billion being transferred to the Education Future Fund has to come from the General Fund. So this is the General Fund forecast from the Appropriations Committee Recommendations Report earlier and released earlier on March 14. Again, I'd call your attention to the two bottom lines on the table, where we see, again, a structural deficit on the amount of revenues relative to the amount of appropriations anticipated and the declining ending balance of the General Fund over the next three years. There was a significant adjustment made by the Economic Forecasting Board at their February meeting that lowered revenue, expected revenues for income tax, individual income tax receipts for the '24-'25 year by $570 million. That is factored into the projections that you see, but there were no future reductions in the '25-'26 or '26-'27 year for reduced income tax, further reductions in the income tax rate passed last year. So when we take a look at the impact of, potential impact of LB 1331, and we factor in increased revenues from the sunsetting of the LB 1107 tax credits, that would add approximately $561 million annually to state revenues. The sales tax increase should bring in approximately $650 million annually. Again, that starts on January 1, 2025, so we only factored in half of that amount in the first year of the increased sales tax rate. We then included that $570 million reduction by the Economic Forecasting Board on the individual income tax rate into the '25-'26 and '26-'27 budget years, knowing that the income tax rate is declining year over year through the 2027 individual income tax year. And then lastly, we included the increases in the transfers to the Education Future Fund. $250 million had already been budgeted to transfer over to the fund. So the new statutory language being proposed would transfer almost $1 billion in '24-'25, in addition to that $250 million, and then moving up to a total transfer of $1.5 billion in '26 and '27 fiscal years. So that's a lot of information there. I apologize, but I wanted to step through each of the pieces on that amount. You can see that all of these proposed changes only compound the deficit, structural deficit in the revenues and the anticipated appropriations, growing from a positive $13.7 million for the current fiscal year to a negative $377 million next state fiscal year, all the way up to potentially $750 million of deficit in the '26-'27 budget year. You'll also see that the resulting ending balance of the General Fund actually could potentially go negative by as much as $300 million in '26-'27, based on the assumptions made from the legislation and the information available on future income and revenue streams. So what does that additional potential state aid mean for us as a school district? In the current year, we are receiving $285 million in TOSA funds. We budgeted $33 million in special education reimbursement funds and had a total property tax request for the General Fund and the Special Building Fund of $333.3 million. If LB 1331 is enacted as proposed, our TOSA funding would go up to $468.5 million. Our special education funding is already scheduled to go up to $63.3 million. But our total property tax request authority, as calculated under statute, would drop by 58% to $139.6 million. That would result in a corresponding levy of approximately 41 sets, a 63-set decrease from the current levy of $1.04 sets. That's based on an assumption of certified property valuation going up by 6.5%, which is in line with preliminary reports we've received from the Douglas County Treasurer, or Assessor, excuse me. The board would potentially have the option to do a 4% override for an additional $27.8 million in General Fund revenue from local property tax requests. That would result in a corresponding levy of 49 cents, which would be a decrease of approximately 55 cents. You can see that our split between state funding and local funding also changes drastically from 45.7% state, 54.3% local, to almost 71% state and just over 29% local funding. So we would receive the vast majority of our operating funds from the state of Nebraska and be dependent on those appropriations in future years. So in summary, the plan appears to be unsustainable. General Fund is projected to have significant structural deficits for the next three years, potentially getting even larger when the final step down of the individual income tax rate reduction is implemented for the '27-'28 school year, or state budget year, excuse me. Historically, when the state has faced significant budget shortfalls, state aid to school districts has received a disproportionately larger reduction relative to other state activities. State funding for public schools is already the single largest line item in the state budget. LB 1331 proposes to virtually double that amount to over $2 billion a year. Based on the portion that we receive for foundation aid or the potential for that property tax reduction funding, we would realize approximately at least 10% of any reduction to state aid in total. We educate approximately 15% of the students, so any changes or reduction in the amount appropriated in the future for foundation aid would have a significant impact on us. And if they reduced that $750 million property allocation aid funding, we would probably realize about 12% of any reduction in that funding in the future. This plan essentially sets up uncertainty and volatility for school district property tax levies in the future. While our patrons would potentially see an immediate reduction of the General Fund and Special Building Fund levies of between 55 and 63 cents in the upcoming school year, any significant reductions of state aid in the future by the legislature would potentially require significant levy increases to remain revenue neutral or continue to receive that 3% increase annually. Based on the projections of the Education Future Fund and the State General Fund, I think it's prudent to assume that there would have to be some significant reductions in either the next biennium or the following biennium budget by the state in education funding. And that would be extremely detrimental to us as a district and districts statewide as we become more and more reliant on the proposed increase in state funding. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Really appreciate it. The gist of that is, is that they are changing how much state aid we will be getting, going from 45% to 73%, but that increase in state aid is coming out of a fund that will go into the deficit in the next two to three years. So while this increase in state aid, woo-hoo, is going to be really great and property tax levy could go down from 104 to just 41 or maybe 49 cents if we do the override, we can assume that when the money runs out, we're going to have to take our property tax levy back up again. So that's kind of the bottom line of what's going to happen here, is that even though there's a lot of money going in that they've, on paper, are putting into the Education Futures Fund, it's unsustainable, as thank God somebody else figured out besides me. And so to begin with, the property rates can go down, but two or three years from now, when they run out of money, the fact that we are relying on the state for 73% of our budget will really come around to bite us, and we will have to take property taxes back up. Thank you for making sense out of what is no sense. I just have one quick question, Mr. Ryan. As I was looking at this and thinking about all the places money goes, did your modeling happen to anticipate that, I guess, the General Fund could be financing LB 753?
We did not look at anything outside of LB 388 and 1331 for these particular projections.
Okay, so the point I think I'm making is that LB 753, that money's coming out of the General Fund, 25, if it stays the law, $25 million the first year, scheduled to go up to $200 million-ish? And so that would accelerate, if I'm right, how quickly this would go down.
There would be some modeling implicit in the Appropriations Committee report that we started with our baseline factor. And so we only made the one adjustment for anticipated reductions in individual income tax receipts based on the Economic Forecasting Board. But certainly, that could have significant detrimental consequences as well.
Thank you. I didn't mean to suggest you should have modeled it. I was trying to just make sure I understood some of the other factors that are floating around out there. Thank you very much. I'll hand it back to Mr. Head to see if anyone has any other questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I've talked with you about this before, Mr. Ryan. I wrote my master's thesis on K-12 school financing, so I love geeking out about this stuff with you. So I'm getting really bad feedback. Is your mic still on? Or is somebody else's on? No, maybe it's just me. So you already alluded to this, and Ms. Sertanberger did as well. So another one of the big problems with us potentially becoming 74% state-funded is we're really turning over all control of the school district, to an extent, to the legislature and the political whims of the state. I mean, if we're beholden to the state for nearly 75% of our budget, I mean, anytime the legislature says jump, we have to say how high, because they pay for everything that we do. You know, any programs that we have, any curriculum adoptions that we have, any staff that we hire, it all ebbs and flows as beholden to the economy, to, you know, anytime there's an economic downturn, we're potentially looking at laying off staff, laying off teachers in the classroom because the state's going to necessarily have to cut funding. So putting on my taxpayer hat, I love the idea of a 41-cent levy, don't get me wrong. But if we're talking about sustainable property tax relief, you know, looking at our projected budget, and I know it's just a projection for this upcoming school year, but if you tie in the increased money that we're getting for poverty with the revenue caps from last year, I mean, we're already looking at, you know, potentially a significant reduction in the levy this upcoming school year. I mean, is that, can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So while nobody really likes property taxes, property taxes are the most stable source of funding for school districts. of funding for school districts across the state. They are very stable, valuations very rarely decrease year over year, and historically, the rate of appreciation in property has been fairly normal in the 3% to 4% range. Certainly, coming out of COVID and the impact that that had on property valuations and interest rates, the rate of valuation has been significantly higher, predominantly in the ag sector earlier in the decade, but certainly now currently affecting more urban areas. But property taxes are the most stable form of resource for us to budget and project and predict annually. Income taxes, sales taxes are both highly volatile. While you can come within some very, some fairly precise margins of projecting those out, certainly, it seems about once a decade, once every 12 years, there is a significant budget constraint at the state that causes them to have to look at significant reductions, typically in the tens or hundreds of millions of dollars. And so doubling the amount of state investment in schools is a laudable notion and something that should be looked at solely for the purpose of providing property tax relief. Perhaps that may not be the best policy decision moving forward.
Well, thank you. And, you know, just talking about, you know, again, sustainable property tax relief, you know, this proposal, obviously not sustainable, it's going to bankrupt the state pretty quickly, or at least they're going to have to make some tough decisions going forward. Whereas the, you know, we may not all like the funding formula, a lot of the changes that were made last year, but at least as far as sustainability goes and providing tax relief, you know, seems like that's our best bet, is sticking with the formula as it exists.
So you mentioned our previous projections on the state budget next year. Assuming no change in, in school funding, no additional funding from the state, the increased funding we were set to receive from our poverty allowance, being a community eligibility provision school, and also the increase in special education funding likely would result in a levy for the general fund and special building fund of somewhere around 85 to 86 cents. So already, the LB 243 revenue caps are having the desired impact to help push property tax levels lower relative to the increases in valuation. Certainly, the steady state and letting the reforms that were passed last year, giving them an opportunity over a course of two to three or even five years to see what that does to actual property tax valuation, perhaps does have some merit for consideration by the legislature and the governor.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Ms. Full?
Thank you. So we were talking about how, you know, this proposal would make it so we lower our levy, you said, to 41 cents is what we would need to meet our budget goals?
Potentially that low, yes.
So if we go down to 41 cents next year, and, you know, the state has a budget shortfall, how much are we able, and I'm not saying next year it's going to happen, but in the future, how much are we able to raise the levy annually? Is there a certain percentage or how does it work?
So LB 243 provides for approximately 3% plus some student growth factors for annual increase in revenue. Last year and this year, we were around 4.8, 4.9%, or, excuse me, 3.8, 3.9% in our revenue cap calculation. So approximately 3.5% to 4% annually is what we could grow revenue. The way the cap is structured to work, if state funding increases, the amount of property taxes allowed under that revenue cap decreases. So say, two to three years down the road, if the state had to decrease appropriations for state aid to schools, that would correspondingly allow for an increase in the amount of property tax revenue, but that would take action by the Board of Education at that point in time, and it could potentially be a double-digit increase either in percentage of the levy or in actual cents.
Okay. And so our levy is currently at 63 cents, correct?
Our general fund and special building fund levy is at $1.41.
Okay, what's the 63 cent number I was hearing? I'm sorry. Or did I just make that up?
No. So if LB 1331 passes, and there was no board override recommended or passed by the board, our levy would drop to 41 cents, which would cut 63 cents off the levy.
Oh, geez, sorry. It's getting a little late. These are a lot of numbers. Okay, so if we, if we needed to bring our levy, say, say we're at the 41 cent, we approved it, and we need to, there's budget shortfalls, and we need to go all the way back up to where we're at right now, how long, how many years would it take us to get to that place?
There are a lot of variables in that question, Ms. Full. So the number one variable would be what happens to state funding, which I think is, at the end of the day, is the biggest question with this legislation. Just how long can the state sustain a over $1 billion increase in funding for education for schools? If it is a slow reduction in state aid, it would take a period of many years to get back up to the current $1.05 cap on property taxes for the general fund. If there was a shock to the system and they had to cut hundreds of millions of dollars in state aid funding, then it would take a shorter period of time to get back to current state.
But it would, it would take a period of years.
Yes.
It wouldn't be just like, in one year, we could get back up to where we're at currently. Okay, so I was just trying to get some clarification and make a point about, you know, lowering our levy. You all know how I feel about lowering our levy. I don't support doing it, really, in many circumstances, if at all ever, in our current environment in the state of Nebraska and the way that we fund education, because the plans that the legislature has are so volatile and can change, I feel like, on a dime almost. And if we're not realizing the full growth, if we're not taking advantage of the money that we can in this current moment, it's going to be so much harder for us to do that in the future. And that's the point that I was trying to make this year when we decided to lower our levy. It's just, we need to be realizing our full growth, and that's just my personal opinion, because of the plans that the legislature has. And, you know, the legislature can do whatever they want, but we also have to respond as a school district to ensure the success and the funding that is needed to educate our students. And so I'm not directing this at you, I'm just talking to everybody on the board, but I just hope everybody kind of keeps that in mind when we talk about lowering our levy. I think it's really going to kick us in the butt in the future, you know, if these budget shortfalls do happen, it's just going to make it significantly harder for us to meet our budget goals.
I appreciate that feedback, Ms. Full. I do think, depending on what happens with LB 388 and any potential changes to the revenue caps, there is a strong potential that a 4% override by the board could be something that would need to be considered, especially with the ESER funding ending in September of this year and the significant investments that we are going to continue making in technology for students and internet connectivity for students and ensuring that we keep up on our curriculum adoptions. And so I do think that we may look at that seriously in the budget development process.
Shane? Oh, I'm sorry. That made me think then. So if we get this huge windfall of unsustainable state dollars, do we have to go down to 41? I mean, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, so your point is very well taken, but we will be forced to go down to 41, and to get from 41 back up to where we need to be, 104, we would have to override every year for, I'm just saying, we have to go, you know, I'm taking the number 60 divided by four. To me, that takes like 15 years, but I know there's a little bit more to it than that. And the override bill that they're talking about right now is, we can't just kind of do it to get back to it, we have to use it. I mean, that's where the status of the bill right now is, is that even if we sort of said, holy cow, we're under, we will be underwater, so let's start building our levy back up, unless we actually use it, we can't do it.
So thank you very much for making that point, Ms. Erdenberger. I think maybe I buried the lead a little bit in, in the PowerPoint presentation. There is, the revenue proposed, the funding proposed in LB 388 and 1331 does not create new funding for education. It shifts the burden of the funding from property taxes to state tax proceeds, predominantly through the 1-cent increase in the sales tax and also income taxes. So by design, LB 243 will require that all of this potential new funding go directly to property tax relief. It will not provide any additional funding next year that we weren't already planning on budgeting for. It merely changes the source of that funding.
And just to clarify real quick, so the LB 243 is a cap on total revenue, not levy growth, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, so, so ostensibly, this passes, and then one school year from now, the state decides that they're going to change TOSA back to as, how it is right now. And so theoretically, we could jack up the levy 63 cents in one year because we're not seeing additional revenue. State revenue is dropping, so local revenue is making up the difference, our revenue stays consistent.
Right. That is exactly correct, Mr. Head, yes.
So my 15, my 15-year calamity scenario is not probably accurate?
Potentially. I mean, it depends on how slowly or how quickly.
But we could do it in, it sounds like, what you're saying is, we could do it in one year.
We could do it in one year.
If all of the money dropped out.
Depending on how drastically the state cuts funding.
In any event, we will be facing, or our successors will be facing, having to raise the levy inevitably, based on all the information we have right now.
Yeah, absolutely. And going back to the point earlier, you know, as a, as a district that's 73, 74% at or below the poverty line, you know, we have a lot of families, a lot of, a lot of students in our district who, you know, they're struggling to make ends meet, to put food on the table. And so we need to be conscious of how much we're charging them as well and, you know, charging them more than we necessarily have to for the, you know, to be able to live, to be able to keep a health, you know, a roof over their head. You know, we need to be conscious of that as well as the school district, so we shouldn't keep the levy higher than we absolutely need it to be. But this proposal, you know, while having a 40-cent levy sounds great, it's just not sustainable. You know, what we have right now is already going to achieve significant levy relief this school year or this, you know, upcoming school year under the proposed budget, and it's actually sustainable in the long term, is what it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Juarez?
Okay, so the 4% override that you're allowed, did you have a, do we have a screen about, oh, that, it's this one right here, okay. So if we did that, what I wanted to know is, are we going to get dinged in another way when we do this override? I mean, is something going to happen next because we did this?
So that is a great question, Ms. Juarez. Certainly, the legislature passed these revenue caps last year. There was direction, based on how the statute was written, that boards could pass an override, not levy it, and carry that amount forward in calculating future caps and potentially not having to vote on an override in a future year. There were, over half the school districts in the state passed a board override. Only about, I think it's approximately 40 of them actually levied for that override. I apologize, I probably shouldn't have said 40, but it was a small number that actually levied for that override either fully or a significant portion of it. That is some of the genesis of why the legislature is looking at adjusting the revenue caps. Number one, to make sure that that board carryover amount doesn't include unlevied authority. And number two, potentially taking it out of the base on a subsequent amendment. I think as we look at what the budget amounts look like for next year, certainly saying that we lowered, that the board lowered the levy 55 cents down to a 49-cent levy, but went ahead and did levy that 4% override, depending on what the expenditure side of the equation is, that may be a reasonable action to continue some of the efforts that we've initiated under the ESER funding that's going away. So as we work on developing the budget and working with the Appropriations Committee and individual small groups with board members, we'll talk about what the practical implications of a 4% override are and make recommendations as an administration on what we think would be prudent for you to consider, looking at not only the fiscal but the political impacts of that decision.
You know, I think, in reality, to me, the message that's being sent to us is that they want us to figure out how to cut back on our expenses, bottom line. You know, that we need to face the reality of what cuts that we need to make where and to quit thinking that we're always going to get this funding for public schools. You know, obviously, I'm supportive of our public schools, I want our public schools to be strong. However, I feel the reality is, we need to face, where are we going to make future cuts? And not to pretend that that's not ever going to happen, because I think that it's going to. And after the feedback that we got tonight, based on the other issues that were addressed to us, complaining about how we didn't, we aren't transparent, you know, why haven't we discussed things with our community? Well, when we face these decisions, that's when we have to have more meetings. That's when we have to have, share with the public, this is what's going to happen. Because I don't want to be facing that we aren't transparent, that we don't include them. When it comes to something as serious as this, as our budget, I hope that we have those meetings with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. I just want to, the motion is, we had opposed LB 1331. LB 1331 changed provisions related to truancy and attendance. So the fact that we already are opposed to 1331 doesn't actually apply to what's going on now. So the motion that I think we need to be able to give to our lobbyists is that we recommend that we oppose 1331 as proposed to be amended by Amendment 3264. Is that right?
So just a couple of items, if I might, so that we have flow clarity. And I think one other really important piece in all of this is that it reduces the number of school districts that receive TOSA, and we will be one of 53 school districts that receive TOSA. And at, in a shortfall, that could be something that, since it is, we are receiving the largest portion of TOSA funding, because we don't have those local resources, that could be a potential, because there's such a small, small number of school districts that are receiving TOSA funding, and it isn't going to include Lincoln. Lincoln does not receive TOSA funding after this. Miller does not receive TOSA funding after this. I think it's important for everybody to understand that that is something that could be on the chopping block going forward. And this all relies on what is going to happen tomorrow. LB 388 is up, and it requires that 1-cent sales tax increase, and that means that they have to have at least 33 votes to get over cloture. And at least the first four hours of initial discussion indicated that that might be a high hurdle. So all of this relies... So all of this relies upon the fact that that does in fact get passed. And so there is also a fear, if I might, on thirteen thirty-one, that they do this without the funding available, which would precipitate already a shortfall that you see with the funding that has just been presented to you. So if, if I might, I think that's an important piece, uh, to all of this. I think that one of the concepts that a lot of the senators have been talking about is direct funding eleven oh seven. So having that be kind of a solution, maybe that enables a, a property taxpayer to pay less, uh, in what they receive, so we get a check. Uh, I, I use the hundred-dollar example as an easy, uh, example, and let's say, uh, thirty percent of that is paid by the state. So the state sends us thirty dollars, and, uh, then, uh, we pay, the local property taxpayer pays seventy dollars of that. And so that way, you don't actually have to apply for that tax credit on your, uh, uh, income taxes that you're filing with the state. And according to the numbers that they have, that they've been, uh, saying at the legislature, over sixty percent of our taxpayers in the Omaha Public Schools are not claiming their credit currently, that are eligible to them. So I do think that could be a sol, a solution, while not, uh, quite as great as what we have here. That isn't something that we're asking you to oppose, uh, in this legislation, because that is in fact included in thirteen thirty-one. The opposition, uh, is more to the overall sustainability of it, and any pieces or parts. Um, and if I might, also any other legislation that they have, or vehicles that they have available on the floor to them, to dump this into. Let's say the vote doesn't go the way that they intend it to go tomorrow, they might put it into another revenue bill on select file. And so it could be any vehicle that they use, that uses the concepts of foundation aid, uh, and that inability to increase that funding, with the exception of eleven oh seven, just so that that idea is fully flushed out, uh, and we have clear direction from the board.
In connection with discussion, my question is, um, L B three eighty-eight, uh, as amended with thirty-two oh three, presumably was a bill that we took a position on last year. Do we need to restate it now that it's been amended? I mean, do we need to vote on both of these?
Uh, so it does have a new A M. So I, I would suggest that just gives us clear direction as to.
Okay, well, the motion for the moment is L B thirteen thirty-one, uh, as amended with Amendment thirty-two sixty-four. That's the one that spends all the money that, um, they may or may not have. So, uh, our recommendation is to vote no on that L B thirteen thirty-one as amended.
And it is a, yep, yeah, it's a committee motion, so it doesn't require a second. Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Full?
I just had one more thing, uh, when we started talking about, um, eleven oh seven tax credits, and, uh, that was passed in twenty twenty, correct?
Either twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. For some reason, I feel like it was twenty twenty-one, but I could be wrong on that.
Okay. And that was supposed to be the plan to lower property taxes in the state. But it didn't work out because of the implementation. And, uh, when I worked for Senator, Senator Carol Blood as her legislative aide, this is actually one of the bills that I worked on and that she introduced, was to make the eleven oh seven tax credits, um, automatic. Because currently, as it stands, you have to apply for the funds. And, uh, or you have to apply for the tax credit. And a lot of homeowners don't know, like you said, sixty percent, they don't even know that they qualify for something like this. Uh, you know, the awareness campaign was almost non-existent, so people literally have no idea that, that they could take advantage of this. And so I just wanted to, um, comment on that, and how, uh, you know, the plans that the legislature puts forward each year to lower property taxes have not been successful because of the implementation of the plans. And so, um, I just wanted to make that as an observation.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? All right, seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Coleman. Juarez.
Yes.
Crackkey.
Yes.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Aye.
Erdnberger. Full.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Aidai.
Motion carries, thank you. And do we need another motion on, uh, L B three eighty-eight?
I'm gonna ask legal counsel, because I feel like we've, we've moved ourselves into something of a corner here. Because we support L B three eighty-eight if, I mean, thirteen thirty-one requires three eighty-eight, right?
So we would recommend a, a position of monitor. I think the point, uh, that, as I understand it, um, is that if they don't receive the funding, that it makes thirteen thirty-one that much more precarious from three eighty-eight.
Okay, then, uh, do we need a motion for that? Oh, sure, why not? We're all here, since we don't have anything else to do? Okay. Uh, the committee moves that we monitor L B three eighty-eight as amended with Amendment three-two oh three, which is supposed to generate sales tax funds, uh, and, uh, to be able to fund the bill that we just talked about. Um, the recommendate, the motion is to, uh, monitor with research.
All right, we have a committee motion, doesn't require a second. Mr. Tealyn?
So I, we can put that on the record, that, uh, just point of order. I, because it was decided at this moment, I don't think it is a committee motion, it was decided by the committee. So I'm gonna say that it requires a second.
Would you like a second?
And I'll second it, yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Motion by Ms. Erdnberger, second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Coleman. Juarez.
Aye.
Crackkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Aidai.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to Item K, the receipt of reports, we have two this evening. Item K one, the Head Start Monthly Board Report for February twenty twenty-four, and Item K two, the Head Start Community Assessment Update for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Smith for a motion.
I'm moving that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Juarez, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Crackkey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Full.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Coleman. Juarez.
Aye.
Aidai.
Motion carries, thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and their prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, pending litigation, real estate, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at eight fifty-two P M. at 8:52 PM. Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 9:07 PM. Let the record reflect, the board meeting adjourned at 9:08 PM.